Hi, welcome to the Stone Godfather Show. I'm your host, Peter Metzschel, and my special guest today, to my right, is Richard Stady, County Commissioner, and also an attorney, and he's from Canton, Massachusetts. So, welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me.
County Commissioner.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Want to open up the show, say something about yourself, so people get to know what you do?
Sure. Well, I was born and raised in Canton, graduated from Canton High, Stonehill College, Bridgewater State with a master's in education, and then further my education at Suffolk University Law School. I have served in Canton as a member of the Select Board for nine years. I also served in various committees, and I still serve and have been elected the town moderator in Canton, so I serve at town meeting. I was elected county commissioner, very fortunate to win that election in 2020 during the pandemic, so I'm about halfway through my term, and it's been an exciting position, lots of challenges and lots of things we can talk about today.
Good, glad to hear that. Okay, we'll start off with this ARPA. Can you explain what it does?
Sure.
And what it means anyways?
Absolutely. Well, following, during the pandemic, you might recall, there was the CARES Act, which was enacted in 2020. The funds came from the federal government to deal primarily with equipment for safety of the workers and for everyone else, in terms of test kits and things of that sort. In 2021, Congress enacted the American Rescue Plan of Action, so-called ARPA. And as part of the ARPA program, funds and money, federal funds, were sent to the counties across our nation for distribution, as they saw fit, according to guidelines promulgated by the United States Treasury. So Norfolk County, by virtue of the ARPA program, received $137 million in ARPA funds, and we have just received our second payment. So we have that money that was given to us by the federal government. Now, the money must be spent and can be distributed on the basis of various projects. The idea behind it is to stimulate jobs and help local communities further in terms of water and sewer programs like that. So if you go to our website, there's a great portal that we have now established and set up, so towns can apply for the grants directly. Again, it could be the category of water improvement, sewer improvement, broadband improvement, public safety, also this economic development, revenue replacement, things of that nature. It's all outlined on our portal. Town of Stoughton, for example, recently applied and is close to getting approval for their grant. Stoughton, by virtue of their property and their size, is slated to get about $5.6 million in ARPA funds. Now, most communities are taking it piecemeal. They've applied, for example, for like a water grant, or say a sewer grant, or for broadband improvement, but Stoughton has decided to apply for almost all their money at this time, so it's under careful review, and I'll get that in a minute. Stoughton's going to be getting from us, hopefully very soon, a grant in the amount of five and a half million dollars for the purpose of their new public safety facility, which you're probably aware of, their building. So that's money, it gets scrutinized, the grants get evaluated by two separate CPA firms. We did that to make sure that everything was done properly and that everything was done correctly, so that if there was a federal audit, when this program is done, we won't have any kind of problems with anybody going to jail. So we have two CPA firms that are doing a great job on this, and we also have a law firm, Minton Levin, which also reviews the applications. So we've built in protection, both for ourselves and of course for the taxpayers, to make sure that the grants and the money are being spent the proper way. As I said, Stoughton is close to getting about five and a half million dollars. There was a recent change, I believe, in the leadership in Stoughton in terms of the manager, and so that's kind of delayed it a little bit, and actually to our credit and to Stoughton's as well, we're actually assisting Stoughton. The CPA firm has been reaching out to them and trying to finish the job and do it correctly with them, so they can get across that finish line.
Well, that's good. We can sure use that money.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Now, one more thing, if I could, on the ARPA, if I could. So of the 137 million, I'm very happy to report that now to date, as of this date, Norfolk County has given out, Peter, over, close to $25 million, which is an incredible amount of money, has been given to towns like Bellingham, Franklin, Wellesley, Milton, you know, Canton, Stoughton, and in each case, they're filling a valuable need for that community. And what's happening is the towns can use the money they get from us for their projects, and then the money they have that they raise by property taxes and other sources, they use for other places. So it's been a very good program for everybody, it's working out well, working out great. We are, I think, the number one county as far as distribution of the ARPA funds, and we meet with the other counties on a regular basis, too. Part of our job as commissioners is to make sure that we're communicating and that we're in touch with the other counties to see what they're doing, and we like to see if we're doing something right or wrong and obviously make improvements on it, but we seem to be the leader at this point.
That's good, that's good news to hear. The Aggie School. Any changes made in Norfolk County Agricultural School since you took office?
Yes. Well, I didn't mention in the beginning, and I should have, that for many years, I served as a teacher at Canton High School, and so with that background in education as a classroom teacher, and then later, I served as a Director of Science and Technology, it has really helped me as a commissioner to understand the issues at the Aggie School. One of our jobs, one of our many jobs as commissioner, is to be a trustee at the Aggie School. So-called Aggie School is the Norfolk County Agricultural School. It has over 500 students, from students across the county and students outside the county, and they have a very diverse curriculum, focused of course on agriculture, horticulture, vet tech preparation, and even in college prep as well. And it's a great school, but it needed, let's say, some tweaking. So we've actually had a change of leadership over the last two years, coincidentally, perhaps with my election, but we have a new superintendent that we hired, we have a new business manager, we have a new principal, and we have a really new focus at the Aggie School. The school is undergoing, let's say, some change, change is better in this case, to make a good school even better, more relevant, and very proud of what we've done there. It's a great school. Stoughton, I think, I checked, the last time I checked, based on last year's population, Stoughton sends 12 students there.
12 students?
Yeah. And the tuition of the Aggie School was revisited. I will say that for many, many years, the Aggie School was running at a deficit, and the problem was, no one had looked at the tuition for over 10 to 12 years. So as a new commissioner, I am prone to ask questions, you know, and I found out that they weren't really tying in with the salaries and the raises and the cost of fuel and things like that, the cost of run of school. And so we did a study, we had an independent consultant come in and did a survey of different schools and in terms, gave back with a recommendation. And so our tuition locally, for a local student, is in the vicinity of around 4,000 per student if you are a resident of Norfolk County. If you're a resident outside the county, the tuition and the related expenses is about seven times that amount. So you pay more if you're outside the county. So we got a significant amount from, for example, Boston and Brockton, send us a tremendous amount of students.
Really?
But, you know, for our district. But we also get the revenue from that, which has helped us kind of fiscally right our ship.
So let me make sure I get that straight. So any child going there, in the county, only pays $4,000?
Per year, and it's not, they don't pay, the town assesses that, like on the cherry sheet.
So basically, when they get out of it, they don't have any debt to pay?
No, so it's funded by the town. It's the town responsibility. So if Canton sends, say, two students, maybe two times four, they'd get a bill for $8,000, you know?
All right, so same as going to southeastern region, so the town pays for it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right.
And, okay, so what is the budget, excuse me, for the county and how is it paid?
So there's a variety of sources that we have available to us to raise money. The budget that was recently passed for fiscal '23 is in the vicinity of 33 million. About 14 million is for the Aggie School, so a little less than half, and the rest is for the operation of the county itself. Remember, the county, to back up to what our job is, we're responsible for the maintenance of all the courts. That means the upkeep, the repair, all the related issues that go into the heat, the electric, and things of that nature. We also have a small engineering department that services communities on county roads and layouts, and also will do jobs when requested and if available for county towns that don't have an engineering staff. So for example, I believe in the project that's going out in front of the district court, that construction that's going on in front there, that had to do with the sidewalk, that's the county way. So our county engineers assisted the town of Stoughton in determining the proper layout and did some of the engineering for that. We also have a veteran agent who is part-time, but he fills in again when towns don't have a veteran agent available. I know in my own town in Canton, a well-known agent, Mr. Tony Andriadi, who recently passed away, was the agent for many years. When Tony retired, they were left without anybody, and the county agents stepped in and did a great job. And we also have RVP program, which assists senior citizens, and there's also of course the, the maintenance of the Registry IT program and things of that nature. So the bottom line is, the money's well spent, and we have to get the money from somewhere. Like a town, we are handicapped or restricted, shall we say, to raise only 200% off the previous year's assessment from each town. So we can only raise or get from like towns like Canton, Stoughton, Franklin, so on, 200% of the previous assessment. The other revenue comes in from, a small amount of state aid comes in, a small amount comes in in terms of fees and assessments, and also from the registry of deeds. When you pass papers that are registry of deeds and there's a closing, there's a tax you pay on that, stamp tax, certain amount of that deeds excise tax goes to the state, that's a lot of it goes to the state. A small amount goes to the registry, a small amount goes to the county. Given last year, the incredible market in real estate, we had a very good year in terms of raising revenue from the deeds excise tax. But that, again, is something that you can't always predict. If the market goes down, you know, we're going to be impacted by that. So with that, to tell you the truth, and working in a budget, we've actually, again, initiated for the first time in the last two years, just started, a capital program. They never had that before. So we actually have capital planning going on. We're looking at projects long range and budgeting things long range, which we should be doing.
That's the problem here.
Right.
We talk about it, but we never do it.
Well, we have that ability, at least now, because of the funding we have, and we can do some of these things, we can spread out for fiscal '24, '25. We're requiring our department heads to do a budget where they give us what are their needs for operational, and then what are their needs for capital, and then we make an assessment, we're jointly in discussion with them and our director, John Cronin, who does an excellent job, and we evaluate those things in terms of level of priorities, priority one, two, three. I'll just give you a quick example. Yesterday, the Aggie School presented a request for $100,000 study for the feasibility of renovating the cafeteria. And the cafeteria at the Aggie School is old, it's worn down, it needs to be repaired and replaced. So that could be a new capital program we might be looking at, but it starts with a study, like you know, when they do schools, and then we kind of, we go from there.
All right, so a lot of that money that you talked about, the registry stamps on real estate.
Yes.
That's where the CPC funds come from?
Yes, yeah.
So otherwise, all the money you're saying was a big bump a year, so a lot of these cities and towns should be expecting to get a bigger percentage back, I should think?
No, no, like the revenue we get comes in in terms of an assessment, and then the payment comes back to the county in terms of the county treasurer, Mike Bellotti, and then that, we get a trial balance every month that shows us revenues, expenses, and how we level funded, how we meet in our budget. We have a program, like I said, where we're planning some capital planning, we've got some long-term debt to pay off, and we also have an unfunded pension liability.
Yeah, I agree.
That is not a good situation, and again, we're making an effort to pay that down, which is good for our bond rating. So, you know, there's a lot of liabilities on a county, just like a town.
Yeah.
Just like a town, very similar, that we have to, you know, meet and head on.
Okay, what percentage is for the schools?
Well, as I said, the school gets, I think last year, the budget for the school was around 12 to 13 million. I could be wrong a little bit, but talking rough numbers. So if you look at a budget of 33 million, you know, a little less than half, which again is pretty consistent, you know, maybe, I know in Canton, the percentage shifts a little bit, it might be more 55, 45, depending on the community, but, you know, the amount of money that now is appropriated and budgeted for the school is very fair and very reasonable. And again, what's helping us is a new tuition rate, which has helped to infuse some much-needed, you know, capital into our budget, so we can get out of that debt that we've been paying off. The school also, we just basically finished a very good contract, a three-year contract with the teachers, and as part of that, we actually were able to negotiate an extra teaching period, which we found out that we were not perhaps in compliance with the 990 requirement of the Department of Education. We have corrected that, we are now in compliance, and it did take a little extra money because we were asking the teachers to do a little more work. But I know as a classroom teacher, you know, people come to you and say, we want to pick up another class, but you know, it's, it's a good atmosphere there, very positive feelings, again, great, great diverse curriculum, hands-on. What I like about the Aggie School, it's a very hands-on school. So the students that go there, if they're going to go into vet, they're working with animals, the cows, the sheep, the horses, it's a beautiful campus, has over 500 acres, and it's a great facility, very proud of it.
They still do their own cooking meals there for the students?
In part of them, they do, yeah. But Blue Hills does more of that. That's the, Blue Hills has that, the chalet, I think it's a restaurant, where they take culinary arts, I believe. I don't know if that's a significant part of the curriculum, their curriculum, they have metal, they have metal shop, they have the other classes that would get into some of the trades, but the emphasis is more on agriculture, horticulture, and vet tech.
Yeah, but I thought years ago, I heard kids going over there, it's going back like 25 years, that the students cook the meals from the animals and the vegetables, everything they raise there. So the meals, the kids were raving about, you know, the good food, it was all fresh, but maybe that's changed over time, I don't know.
There's probably, as I said, a small amount of that that does take place, although they do raise plants, and this summer, I actually saw them participating in the Dedham Farmers Market with some of their tomatoes and other crops that they actually raise, and a certain amount of that is also given to the local food pantries as well. They donate that. I give them a lot of credit for doing the extra effort in the summer. They'll go in in the summer, check their crops, check their plants, and again harvest what they can, and as I said, some of it's donated, some of it they sell at the farmers' market.
Well, that's good. Okay, the commissioners are in charge of maintaining all the courts in the county. Can you update us on a recent court improvements?
Sure. That's a great question. So as I said, one of our jobs as the commissioner is to make sure the courts are all up to date and operating properly. It's a big job, it's a big job. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Locally, let's just talk about Stoughton, the Stoughton District Court, right up the street. I just left that actually this morning, I was on a tour of a recent renovation. Related to COVID, shall we say, the pandemic, there was a dire need for a better ventilation system to get fresh air into the building. So one of the things we set out to do was to get that corrected. Again, we're dealing, as you probably know, with the problem with shortage of supplies, delays in transportation, right? It's not the way it used to be, we'll get it to you in two weeks or three weeks. This project actually started last year, last year, in 2021, and probably in truth, it started when I got elected in 2020, when I did a tour of the Stoughton Court, and I heard that they needed some improvement in the ventilation system, in talking to the Justice O'Malley and the local clerk magistrate. So we started to put together a budget to make that improvement in 2021. I'm very happy and relieved, shall I say, and pleased to say that now that project's been completed, and here we are in, what, September of '22. It just took that long to get the materials, but it's a great piece of equipment, we got two of them, we got two brand-new ventilation units that sit on top of the court, you can easily see them, and they're going to deliver the fresh air and the proper air temperature to the people inside that courtroom, that are judges and our people who work hard, you know, for the next 20 years or so. So it's great. That's just one example. I looked outside and I said to the maintenance director, the parking lot, looks like it could use some, you know, patching up and resurfacing, that's the kind of thing we would do. We were looking at security improvements, maybe it needs additional floodlights to make sure that it's safe for all people. So those are the kind of things that we'll do. And Rentham, that's an older court, we've got significant amount of work that needs to be done, both outside and inside. These all things take, take time. And I'm very proud, again, let's talk to the Dedham Superior Court, which we just have nearly completed the new roof on that. If you go into Dedham Center, you'll see a beautiful golden dome, that's the highlight of the, of the center there. That's going to be named in honor of DA and Congressman Delahunt, it's going to be a naming ceremony in October. So that's, again, the kind of things we do, outside roof repairs, gutters, parking lot, sidewalks, we're in charge of maintaining that court and make sure it's, you know, up to date. We get a certain amount of reimbursement from the state for doing that. So we're like the, like the landlord, should we say? The court, the state rents it from us, and then we have to make the necessary repairs, and then the state, you know, comes out and inspects it, and then gives us, you know, a certain percent of the work back. But yeah, it's, it's exciting, a lot, I've got to get, I mean, one of my goals as a commissioner is to be more hands-on and visit all the courts on a regular basis. And as I said, I was here in Stoughton today, I, my plan is to get over to Brookline Court, check that, get down to Rentham, just make a circuit and visiting the courts and making sure that we're on top of everything, so it's exciting.
Well, the only, the one big thing to draw back with the Dedham Courts is, there's not enough parking space there. You ever try to find a parking space behind there?
There's lots of parking beyond registry of deeds, though, if you're not afraid to walk beyond the street. The deeds is across the street.
Yeah.
And it's got a pretty good-sized parking lot.
Yeah, but I've been there at different times, and you just couldn't find a place to park. It was, you know, of course, maybe the last couple of years with the pandemic and everything else, the way the economy is, maybe it's not bad since you've been there.
Yeah, acquiring, I find it unlikely we'll acquire more parking, but like I said, the registry of deeds building, good-sized parking lot back there.
Yeah.
You know, and don't forget, you also have the Quincy District Court there, I'm sorry, forgive me, the Dedham District Court is there as well. So you've got a Dedham District Court, you've got Superior Court, and you've got the registry, and people are all vying for parking spots, so I can understand what you're saying, you know?
Okay, recreation. The county has a golf course, presidential course, in Quincy. Can you talk about this, part of the county's, what they do there?
Yeah, sure. Again, a good question. So again, one of our jobs as commissioner is to supervise the, what's called President's Golf Course, but truthfully, truthfully, it really is known as the Wallaston Recreational Facility. And again, some of these things have happened over the last couple of years, I'm very proud to say, working with my, my colleagues, we've made some changes there. For example, I never heard of this before, but there's a growing sport in America called pickleball.
Yeah, it's getting popular, a lot of people.
So we put in a pickleball court at the Wallaston Recreation Facility. We took an old tennis court and renovated it into a pickleball court. So at the Wallaston Recreation Facility, it truly is a recreational facility. We have a basketball court, we have a tennis court, we have a pickleball court, and of course, the golf course, which is called President's Golf Course. In addition, we've been working very hard for the last year or so, most notably with Representative Bruce Ayers of Quincy, to obtain funding for a new playground at the site, and this playground, we hope to have, hope to have it dedicated and up and running in the late fall. So there'll be, you know, almost a little bit of everything there, it's, it's truly a recreational facility, it's not just a golf course, and it's in good shape, there's a lot of demand for people that want to go out and golf. I'm not a golfer myself, I, I couldn't hit a ball if you asked me to, maybe I could try it someday, but what I'm told from people that do golf is that it's, it's a good course, it's well-run and well-managed. Again, that's one of our jobs.
Well, my suggestion to you is, why not play golf, because I wish I took it up years ago, because if you go to Florida in winter, what are you going to do? I mean, you're going to go see the sights and that's it, but the golf is, you've got something to do every day.
Well, my dad, you know, my dad actually was a builder at Stoughton many years, you might know him, but may have heard of him, passed away, but dad took up golf when he retired, he did, and he did pretty good, you know, he played at, was it Spring Valley? Is it the Spring Valley down here? Is that the one that's in Stoughton?
No, it's Cedar Hill.
Cedar Hill, sorry, Cedar Hill, Cedar Hill. Yeah, he was a regular down there, and he did okay, he had fun, so good wisdom, someday.
That's good, that's good. All right, let's look into the retirement system, which you already stated, but I've known this for a long time, too, for being on the Finance Committee. I mean, I don't know if they can ever catch up to that, to get that 100% fully funded. So anyways, I think you guys are sitting on a $1 billion in assets, which are accumulated from three different funding sources, members' contribution, unit appropriation, and investment income. So the investments, I'm going to assume, but that kind of money must have a lot of money invested into the market and stuff to generate more income, hopefully down the line, and what do you think's going to happen? I mean, every year, I don't know, it seems like we never catch up.
It's funny, no, with all due respect, when I ran for commissioner in 2020, I did visit a few towns and cable shows, and the hosts asked me about the retirement board, I was a little confused. We don't really, that's not our domain, believe it or not, even though it's called the Norfolk County Retirement Board, the head of that is the county treasurer, Mike Bellotti, and he has a group of people who serve with him. Two are elected, I believe, at large, I think two are appointed. Indirectly, we do appoint one person on that board, we have one appointment, but as far as the day-to-day operation of the county, it really falls to the county treasurer. So I'm not going to be in the area where I can answer all those things, I will say this, that we do have a significant unfunded liability, pension liability, and we are making an attempt, working with Treasurer Bellotti, we have set a goal to try to get it paid off over, I believe it's a 20-year period.
Really?
By making regular payments, that's our goal. So we've made a payment, I believe, last year, of $100,000, and I believe this year, because of the condition of our county, we might make, make even more than that. So our goal is to pay that down. It makes sense as a commissioner, because what Mike has explained to us, and again, you can relate to this in your own town, the lower your debt, the better you get a rating, almost like a person going for a loan or a mortgage, if you have less debt, you might get a better rate. So our bond rating could improve if we can improve on that. So indirectly, even though we're not directly tied into managing of funds and investments, I really can't speak on that, I can't.
Okay.
But I could speak to the fact that the debt is there, it's real, we acknowledge it, we're trying to work and pay it down, and working with Treasurer Bellotti, we hope to have it, you know, in a manageable way very soon, we're trying.
All right, the other thing I don't understand here, going online, I think there's 28 communities under your people.
Yes, sir.
The county, but yet, when it comes to the, no, I didn't know you, Housing Authority, what do you have to do, what do you do as far as housing authorities go?
We do not.
I got this off your website.
Yeah, but again, that's the retirement system, so you can't.
Oh, that goes back to them?
Right, that's the retirement system. That wouldn't be for the commissioner, no?
All right, so.
No, that's okay.
Because my question was going to be, there's 28 towns, but yet, on the link, there's only 18 on this retirement system.
Right, that, I can tell you that, I learned that by campaigning. Some of the towns have their own retirement system. For example, I know of a For example, I know for a matter of fact that Norwood does not belong to the Norfolk County Retirement. They have their own retirement system. You follow me? So that would account for less towns belonging to the retirement. Like Canton belongs to the retirement system. And I believe Sharon does. Norwood does not. I can't give you a list of all of them. But there's probably about 10 towns that don't belong. So that would explain that.
Geez, I wonder how they're doing with their retirement system? If they're way behind or up to date?
I couldn't tell you, I'm sorry. I don't know. Hopefully, County Norfolk County.
That's a good question. I got to look into that, see.
Yeah.
You know, if they still.
Get Mike Bellotti on here. Here's your next call.
Yeah, there you go. Retirement, I got these, we did, we covered that. Norfolk, okay, we already did these two housing authorities. We did that. Geez, we're going to be running out of questions. All right, probate court.
Yep.
Registry of Deeds, property appraisers, Norfolk County Vets and District Allowing. And what the hell is that about? And Public Health Commissioners, Drugs and Alcohol Service. What do you do there for that kind of stuff? Like for the drugs and Health Commissioner? I got all these things off your site.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you got it off the county site, though. I mean, if you go to Norfolk County's site, we have a great website. I mean, and basically, again, our goal is to take care of all the courts. We have a veteran agent take care of the veterans. We have an engineering department take care of roads and layouts. We do have a maintenance that maintains all the buildings and make sure that they're properly cared for. And we have an RSVP program. We don't have a health agent. That might be something that we may talk about and consider. Some town, like, for example, Barnstable County does have that. They have a health nurse who helps out the local nurses. For example, maybe during COVID, we help out with testing for COVID or things of that nature. We don't have that at the current time. However, to speak to your point a little bit, we did apply and did get a grant from the state. We were awarded a small amount of money to deal with the opioid epidemic. And we made that available to towns to apply. And based on the need and based on certain criteria, we were very happy to give the town of Randolph some money to help them out in terms of that situation. That was something we gave to the local police chief. The chief supplied for that. Another thing, that again, down the road, trying to expand the county a little bit, make it a little bit more relevant. We had a presentation made by Canton Fire Chief Duty with several chiefs in the area. And what they have is, it's similar to a police SWAT team. Whereas each town has an officer or two that are trained to respond to crisis, they are developing and they have on, available. Firefighters were trained in certain kinds of techniques. It might be repelling. It might be getting somebody out of a well. It might be for a trench. God forbid, happens someone collapses. So we're trying to see if we can assist that organization. I think it's called the Norfolk County Fire Rescue Tech Team. And that might be something that we're going to investigate further to assist them. Maybe that's something we can do, maybe even with Opera money that we have left over. So, you know, we're looking at ways to expand the use of the county. We don't want to get too big, but we're looking to make sure that what we do right now, we do right. And if we have some ways we can get even better and more relevant, we'll try to do that as well.
Well, that's a good idea. Well, my last question here was the County Treasurer, Michael Bellotti. You know, if you guys, he came under your jurisdiction, but you already answered that question, so. Well, if you'd like to elaborate on something, we've got 23 minutes to go. I thought we had enough, I had enough questions here to go the hour, but I guess I don't.
Well, that's all right. You know, we, well, the county commissioners sometimes are still a mystery. And they really shouldn't be. I think if you said to someone that you were running for state rep or state senator, you wouldn't have to explain your job. People would be right away asking you questions. County Commissioner has been one of those things that people don't know enough about. And so when I ran in 2020 with other good people, I think part of the thing that did happen was that we became a little bit more, let's say, relevant. We became a little bit more transparent. Like I said, we have a website that we're working on all the time. We're trying to make sure, all of our meetings are on Zoom. They're on YouTube, or they're available on the web. You can go on the web and even Google Norfolk County Commissioner, and you'll see the three commissioners. And then there's different links on there you can click on. It's been an honor to serve. I like it. It's very humbling. It's a challenge. Each week is a new thing. It's very similar. The best example I can make is that it's like a combination of being a member of the Select Board and a member of the School Committee. Because part of your job does deal with the school. We have, as a trustee, we have monthly meetings. And that just means once a month. But there's other things that take place, whether you've got negotiations on contracts or there might be a special meeting to talk about certain issues. So your certain amount of time is spent on the school. And on the commissioner's side, if you will, we meet once a week. But again, it's more than that. You know, there's, again, if you ask anybody who serves at a local level, all right, if you're going to be a Select Board person, you can definitely relate to this. It might be one day a week or one day every two weeks, but it's a lot more than that, you know? It's definitely, it's a pleasure. I'm not complaining. It's an honor and a pleasure. But there's always something that's going on. The one thing I find fascinating is that you're working with local officials. So where, for example, next week, we will have a meeting with what's called the Norfolk County Advisory Board. Every town in the county sends one person to represent them. And they are like the Finance Committee, if you will, of the county. So they oversee our budget spending. So if you, you know, it's not like it's reckless. We don't just write blank checks. Everything we do is overlooked by representatives of your community. I believe in Stoughton, the delegate is Mr. McCrisky. All right, so he would go to that meeting. And he can go in person or by Zoom. And we present items to their discussion and debate, and they voted up or down. I myself served in Canton as a delegate for over 25 years. That's how I got into the county. I learned an awful lot about it being on the advisory board. But, you know, you have the County Advisory Board. You have a regular meeting with them. That's once every so often. You have our regular weekly meetings. You have negotiations. And like today, I was at Stoughton Court, touring the court. So it's a fascinating job. It's keeping me busy and involved. I'm drawing upon my background humbly as a teacher, as a Select Board member. It's been great. Working with Congressman Lynch and Oshinclaw as well, newly elected. Been working with him on the Opera Program. It's fascinating. Just an incredible array of people you interact with and on a regular basis. So we hope we're doing the right thing. We feel that we've got the county in good positions to succeed. And hopefully, we'll continue and, you know, keep it rolling.
All right, so Central Street behind me with the sidewalks, that's a county project, basically.
Right.
So that means Phase 2 that comes out next year to do the intersection of Central, Canton, and Toscana Drive. That's still your people.
That they'd be involved, yeah.
The county.
Right. But then again, that's just in terms of engineering. If there's any engineering, if it's a county road or a county layout, we would be the ones involved. And again, we would come out on-site. We would do the surveying. We'd do the plans. We'd present them to the town for review and so on. I think there was another one, too. And I hate to speculate, but I believe that there might have been one up on Plain Street that needed to be done because a builder wanted to buy the land and develop it. It was at town meeting recently, at Stoughton Town Meeting. Might have been a year or two ago. But that was another example of the county had to get the layout done. And then, once it was finished, then it was properly recorded, and then the town could sell that land to that developer for, you know, get some revenue, but.
I'm drawing a blank on that one.
I thought it was Plain Street. I could be wrong, but.
I don't know. The only development I know that's going on is up, uh, Jesus. I think it's Seaver Street. There's a project going on off of Seaver Street. It started, well, it started this year, really, I guess. But maybe that's it, maybe they, I don't know. In fact, it's one of your Canton neighbors there, Piazza's.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, he's a, I forget which one it is. I know Billy Piazza good. I know Guy Piazza. But the other ones, I met once and, you know.
Yep.
I don't really know.
It's a large family.
It sure is, Jesus. They rent everything, house building, electrical.
Yep, they were mostly electrical in the beginning, I think. Weren't they?
I don't know.
Yeah, they were suburban electric, I think, but.
Well, suburban electric, he's on Canton Street. But at the intersection of Toscana Drive and Central, I think it's Chris. He's got an electrical company there, too. So, yeah, they do very well. So anyways, counties. You guys have nothing to do with lakes, restoring lakes?
No.
No.
But again, let me, I'll just point out, I should maybe amplify a little bit on Opera. So the Opera Program, and I want to make sure we're clear on this. So the county was awarded the money. And I think it goes without saying, we made a decision that we would distribute the money to the town. We felt that's where it should go. Help out the cities and towns. We're keeping a small amount of cost for administrative costs, like the CPAs and the lawyers, to make sure we're doing everything properly. So a certain amount is being retained by us. But after this, and the Opera Program ends in 2026. I should have made that clear. So all the money that a town gets, let's say Stoughton, all right, is going to get that grant, which they will. They have to make sure that that money is either expended or accounted for by 2026. I'm just sure they will. And you must apply, in terms of applications, we cannot receive applications after December 31, 2024. So in terms of applying for money for the cities and towns, that window closes in two years, in 2024. We're also looking at, though, the possibility, and we've been approached by some nonprofit groups. So the, I believe it's the watershed groups, the people that are concerned about water and things of that nature. They've approached us about applying. And that would be something we'd be looking at in the next round, perhaps in 2023. So again, dealing with water, per se, preserving lakes in a water city area, we are interested in that. But we have to have a group has to make that application. And we're open to look at that.
Yeah, but this money is just a one-time grant, right?
Right.
So anyway, so Stoughton's taking it all up front because, you know, for the fire station and stuff like that.
That was their decision. Yesterday, we gave.
No, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it.
No, 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 no.
There's going to be no money for doing anything else.
Right. But like, for example, we made a grant to Wellesley, and Wellesley got a grant for $2.5 million to deal with a water issue in their community. But they still have more money they can use, you know, that's coming to them. But Stoughton, their decision was they wanted to put it all towards this one project. So we're accommodating them, and we're working hard with them to get it done. And hopefully, we're getting that check for them.
So Stoughton was aware of this how far back?
They were aware in '21. I mean, the money, the program was enacted by the federal government in 2021. Believe it or not, during that time, there was debate among us politely in terms of what should we do? And I like the fact that on our board, there's three members. The chair is Joseph Shea from Quincy. The other member is Commissioner Peter Collins, longtime member from Milton, who just won the primary. And we will sometimes agree and sometimes we'll disagree. And it's all right. It's okay. And we, I mean, if we disagree, we do it respectfully. And I think that makes us even a better board.
Yes, it does.
You know, we have a different opinion. So it's not always three to zero, it's a, a good debate, and we talk things out. So initially, um, let's just say it took some convincing for us to take the money, which sounds strange. But we're doing it the right way, and we're doing it so that it's safeguarded, it's properly administered, and it's been a great, great success story. Uh, so much so, like I said, other counties are now calling Norfolk County and saying, how did you do this? How did you do that? And we're like the leader, which is great. So very proud of the Opera Program, and I know it helps everybody out, obviously, in many ways.
Well, it's gonna be a big help for the fire station, that's for sure.
Yes.
Long time coming, this fire station. Long time. So anyways, getting back to county surveyors, they go way back to how far back? Quite a few years.
Yeah.
Hundred years, maybe?
Definitely, they've been there for a while. Even when I was on the advisory board, we had surveyors, so I'd say they have to be around forty years or so.
How many?
I, I would say for a very long time.
Yeah.
I can't give an exact date.
I went over there one time to get a plot panel of my property, because when I had it surveyed, it didn't match up with the plan I got when I bought the place. So I went over to County Surveyor's Office in Dedham, and they went back to nineteen, I don't know, it was pretty far back, before they did the widening of Central Street, right, in the middle forties. And so they gave me a plan on my property. Believe it or not, it was on a brown manila paper.
Wow. Wow. That's, that's pretty, that's, that's-
It was different, you know what I mean?
It was different.
So that, that plan they gave me looks nothing like my place and the, and the ones behind me. It's quite a bit difference there, you know?
It's funny, I do, I am an attorney, as you noted, I'm a zoning attorney. And I don't do real estate per se, but indirectly, I work with real estate attorneys. And of that nature, I'm finding that more people are having issues, well, not more people, but you see these issues with people saying, oh, my plot plan says this, but it doesn't match up. And a lot of it now, I think, what I've been told is attributed to instrumentation is better and the use of satellites to target the property meets and bounds. Uh, you gotta understand, I mean, back when our colony started and Commonwealth started, they'd measure things in terms of rods, right?
Yeah, rods and chain links.
Right, and different measurement, and they'd mark it down and put a mound, a boundary there. They were pretty good at that, they really were. But, you know, obviously, we've come a long way since then. And as I said, I think the engineering department, they do a great job. One thing, again, we were without a full-time engineer, if I was a certified professional engineer. We now have that. So we have a professional engineer on, onsite, we have two or three assistants. And, uh, as I said, they're a good department, they work very hard. The problem is, when you're good, everybody wants you.
Yeah, that's right.
So we have a long list of towns that are looking for them to help out, and we've gotta do our best we can to get into them, you know, but.
The pounding, you just said, that's the, they're dropping things on a roof. They're doing this whole place over, but the other time the other day, the evening was shaking here. Depends how hard they drop it and how heavy it was.
Well, this is not an earthquake, right?
Yeah. Well, the, uh, what else can I talk about here? Boy, we got ten, oh, Jesus, I've gotta come up with something here pretty quick, unless you can come up with something that you'd like to talk about.
Well, I mean, you know, like I said, I'm halfway through, uh, my term of office, if we wanted to do a little fun.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, I'll save it up for the end.
What's the next two years look like for us?
Yeah.
Uh, it's speculation, of course, but, um, number one, without a doubt, without a doubt, will be to complete the Opera Program successfully. Our goal is to make sure that all of that money is given out properly to all the cities and towns in Norfolk County. And at the same time, uh, we administer it properly, and we're gonna keep a small amount for county projects as well. We're eyeballing some things that, for example, the Aggie School could use some help, you know, in terms of building, maybe, you know, a new cafeteria. So we're looking at ways we can use the money, but obviously, that would be with the advisory board approval. Anything we do, again, there's a check and balance, and we don't operate in a vacuum. Uh, so the Opera Program, I would say, is one of our number one goals. Uh, number two, looking at courts, I, I should have mentioned, and it does tie into one of your questions. Uh, we're gonna lose a court.
Really?
Quincy, yeah, the Quincy District Court. Remember now, we are like the landlords, we lease. But the state and Governor Charles Baker and his administration decided that what they want to, uh, change the model in some cases from a, a court to what they call a justice center. You know, bear with me, you told me we have ten minutes, so I can explain this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So in Quincy, what's on the drawing board is that they're gonna buy, I believe it's called the Francis Bellotti Trial Court. They're gonna buy that court, the building, the land, and some surrounding land that we own. And they're gonna construct a new so-called justice center. That's just fascinating. The justice center will be a combination of, are you ready? A district court, which is already there, a superior court, okay, and a probate court. Possibly, possibly. Uh, so there might be three things at one place. Now, I know for a fact there'd be the district court and the superior court. There might also be probation and the other things of that nature. So they're gonna call it a justice center, not, not a court. Now, that would beg the question then, what happens to the Dedham Superior Court?
Yeah.
So now, we're discussing that. That might become something different, and so stay tuned. Things we can talk about, again, next time we meet. We might see a shifting of the probate court, which is currently leasing a building in Canton.
Yeah.
You might see it located over in Dedham. They may take that building over. So there's a lot of things, well, excuse me, a lot of moving pieces that are happening right now in the county. Go back to what happens then. If we lose the Quincy District Court, we lose, if you will, part of our revenue, because again, they lease from us, and they pay a certain amount. However, in buying the property, there would be a one-time payment to the county. So again, that creates a very nice problem, like if you sell your house, what do you do with the money?
Money.
Where do you put it? Do you buy another house? Or do you put it away for a rainy day? So these are the things I'm looking at as a commissioner, that I'll be delighted to tackle, and the, the challenge is there for us to examine, discuss, you know, with my colleagues and the advisory board members and others, and look at ways to utilize those funds the proper way. But, um, that's something on the drawing board. Are they gonna take over all the courts? No, they're not. So we'll still have our Dedham District Court, Stoughton will have their district court, you know, Rhythm will have their district court. But they eyeballed Quincy as an area for the so-called justice center. And that, it's a program that they're gonna be doing across the Commonwealth. You're gonna see more of these things. So that's, that's pretty cutting edge. That just happened. Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito and his staff came out to Quincy Court, I think it was, um, might have been two months ago that I met them, beginning of summertime, and time flies. And we had a, you know, we met them there, they announced a plan to close the court and create something else. Uh, of course, then what happens to the trial court in the meantime? They're looking at renting space, which hopefully, they'll find, because that has to operate, you know, day to day. There's a lot going on there at that court. So that's, that's, again, looking at the future, next two years, that's certainly one that I'll be dealing with. And we, as commissioners, will be dealing with. Uh, the Aggie School, continuing to work with the new administration and making sure our curriculum is relevant, to make sure our buildings are up to date and refurbished. That is something that certainly is a challenge. And, um, and as I said, I think that, um, I'd like to see if we can do a little more in terms of public safety. Perhaps help out our fire chiefs in terms of developing this, um, Norfolk County tech rescue. It, it might be a small amount of money, but it'd be money well spent to help the chiefs out, help our firefighters out, and help our citizens out by having a elite group of people that are highly trained to respond to emergencies. So those are just some of the things that I'm, I'm looking forward to in this couple of years. It should be fun.
Yeah. Well, you know, a few years back, they were thinking about closing down the Stoughton District Court. This was way before you come in. And so all our cases would have to go to Rhythm, which, and I guess there was a lot of political maneuver going around, but anyways, thank God, they never closed it down. But now you're telling me the Rhythm Court's a lot older than the Stoughton Court.
It is, it, that certainly is on our radar for some, uh, I would say, some improvement, uh, like I said, both outside and inside. It really needs, um, it's a, you know, a well-run facility, there's no reflection on the people there. It's just, it's an old, it's an old court.
Yeah.
That does need some help. Interesting, though, you should know, too, there was an attempt to actually eliminate the juvenile court in Brookline. And that, uh, was, that was brought to our attention by State Representative Tommy Vitolo, who, by the way, just won his reelection bid in his primary. And we worked with Representative Vitolo as the commissioners and other elected officials to tell the state, please, don't do that right now, that's an important court in that area, serves the people well there. And so the state abandoned their plan to close that court. So like you said, you mentioned Stoughton maybe being closed, that was before my time. I, I don't see that happening at, you know, in the foreseeable future, especially with the money we're investing in Stoughton and other buildings like that. But the Dedham, the Quincy District Court will be closed, and, um, we actually got an appraisal service to look at it, and we're entering into negotiations with the state. So that's, that's something that we'll take with us.
Well, I think family courts should be more localized. I mean, if you start closing them down here, and everybody's gonna travel much further.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people get into the family courts, juvenile courts, it's, a lot of them have financial problems anyway. So how the hell, you know, you're only making it harder for them to travel three times the distance rather than being in their local neighborhood.
Well, to that point, you know, the, the new registrar of probate, Colleen Brierley, who was elected, when I was elected in 2020, she has said to me on several occasions, and to all of us, the problem with the probate court is, again, you're dealing with family issues. And some of them involve guardianship and children, and it's not as accessible as it should be. It's located in an area that doesn't have, let's say, easy access to public transportation. So an upside, let's say, if that did happen, if you moved the probate court from Canton to the Dedham, that might be, make it easier to get access, because that's on a main road. Dedham's pretty easy to get to, in terms of the location.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I can't talk about the parking, but, you know, they will have to look for more land to get more parking there. Maybe that's something we should look at. But, I mean, in terms of access for the people that use it, that's something that could be, again, looking ahead and planning a little bit, moving forward.
Okay, I think you answered most of the question. My rep was gonna be, you're halfway through your four-year term, how do you feel you have done so far? I think you answered most of it anyways, but.
Well, I was a teacher and I was a hard grader, so I, I don't know if you wanna give me a grade, but I always look, there's always room for improvement. There's always things that we can do better. Um, that was something that was instilled in me by my mom and dad, hard-working, you know, immigrants. That was, you could just learn from mistakes and go forward and, uh, you know, do the best you can. The important thing is to do the best you can. So each day, each week on this job is a, is a pleasure, it's an honor, it really is, to serve in this capacity. I'm always learning, you know, and trying to make it better and better. Like I said, next couple of years should be, hopefully, onward and upward.
Well, it was a pleasure meeting you when you first ran two years ago. We did the show from Zoom from my house.
Yes, yeah, I remember.
I kinda miss them Zoom shows, you know, you didn't have to travel, just go sit in your office and then start bringing everybody in.
This is nice, too, though.
Yeah, let's get back to the studio, it's more professional. Cause then I had to run up here and give them the, the CD that I made, so they could get it on the air, convert it, so.
How much time do I have left?
Fifty-one seconds.
You know, I could add one more thing that I probably should have brought out, I'd be remiss if I didn't, and I mean, probably, I'll do it as quick as I can. But, um, uh, there's an ongoing controversy that has to do with the registry of deeds. You may have read some of that or heard some of that. Um, it's unfortunate, I have great respect for the register. Uh, it has to do with our IT department.
Oh, okay.
And as quick as I can make it.
You gotta, like-
Yeah, we had a study done by an independent consultant, we paid money for it, to look at the operations of the county. This was the first time it was ever done.
Yeah.
An independent person to come in and say, this is good, this isn't, this is good, make it better. And based on that study, and then an additional study, they told us we should have a consolidated IT department to oversee all the operations, rather than have it fragmented. It's been a, a source of contention, the register disagrees, sadly, he's even suing us in court, which I feel regrettable. Yeah, and to me, it's a, it's a, it's an unfortunate thing. I can't really talk too much about the merits of the law case, but, um, we're hoping, I would say, in the next two years, I would say, I hope this thing can be resolved, and we can, again, work together for all the citizens in the county.
Is he a Natalie Frisson, or she?
I'm sorry?
Is he or she?
No, it's, it's, Bill O'Donnell, Billy's a well-known guy, you said, from Norwood. He's been in that job for a while. He was at one time a commissioner, um, served as a commissioner. But, um, uh, he, um, uh, he's taken to the point where, um, he's very upset that he's losing what he feels are important people to safeguard his records. What we've tried to stress is that this will even be better. And part of it is, the technology we're gonna implement will utilize the cloud. What cloud? The cloud, right? Right, remember Rocky's line, what cloud, it's in the cloud. But we're gonna use better technology, safer technology, and I hope, like I said, in the next couple of years, that that issue can be resolved, I would hope, and, uh, we're working together as a team.
Okay, we have to wrap, excuse me, we have to wrap it up. Nice to have you on the show.
It was great, really, my pleasure, I'll come back again if you want.
We'll do it again, yeah, anytime.
Excellent, thanks for having me, thank you very much.
Bye, everybody.